I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Councilmember Little.
Here.
Councilmember Sander is absent at this time. Councilmember Budge?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Here.
Mayor Pulapotti?
Here.
Going to ask the city clerk to announce the meeting's video recording and playback schedules.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV/U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, March 20th at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, March 21st at 6:00 p.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can also be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14 and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me in the back? Okay, good. I'm going to call our police chief Matt Tamayo to lead the pledge and I invite the audience to remain standing for the invocation, which will be led by Ruby Smallwood with the Sacramento Sheriff's Chaplaincy.
Good evening, everyone. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Gracious Father, may this day of work have the blessing of your touch, anoint the plans so that even the smallest of tasks set before us brings you honor. May all the work and service we do and the way we do it bless you and those we serve. Bless this council and the committee. They serve with wisdom, discernment, commitment, courage, and strength. Continue to cover them with your peace, love, and guidance. Also bless this time that we will have to celebrate with song tonight. It is a true blessing. Amen.
We're going to move on to Agenda Item 5, 5.1, and I'll go ask Randy K. Stevens to introduce the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. It's my privilege tonight to bring to you NorCal School for the Arts, which is one of our current grantees from the Community Enhancement Investment Funds Community Grant Program. And they have been funded for the last four years to provide incredible theatrical arts education and really amazing support to our students at our elementary schools right here in Rancho Cordova. Tonight, we will feature students from Williamson and I would like to invite Michelle Helen Nuffer to come and speak on behalf of that group and introduce the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy K. I just want to express my heartfelt gratitude to the council for supporting NorCal Arts in bringing theater to Williamson Elementary and Cordova Villa this year. Your leadership in shaping a bold vision for Rancho Cordova has created spaces where meaningful artistic experiences can thrive. At NorCal Arts, we ignite students' imaginations through theater and theater gives students the chance to step into a different character and practice empathy, to explore different stories, and also to build confidence in their own potential. Thanks to the Enhancement Fund grant and your support, this year over 500 students were able to either participate in the after-school production, they'll be able to take after-school classes, and at Cordova Villa, all of the classrooms received Theater Arts integrated with conflict resolution strategies in every single classroom, and that was a 10-week series that they had. We also, over the past five years, we have been able to produce a show every year at Williamson Elementary and this year we were able to add at Cordova Villa. And tonight, we are going to share a moment from Flat Stanley Jr., which is based on a beloved book by Jeff Brown, and the story follows Stanley who wishes for an adventure no one has ever seen before. But when a bulletin board falls on him, he wakes up completely flat. And in this scene that you're about to see, Stanley finds himself in a tree after being blown into the air like a kite. Unsure of how to handle his unexpected adventure, he is encouraged by some very wise birds who help him decide how to move forward. I just want to let you know, we do have five amazing students that are coming to perform. There were 32 students in the cast and under the amazing direction of Cindy Melgoza and our stage manager Jennifer Gunter. We also, I just want to also give a shout out to our superintendent Eric Swanson, a big thank you to Principal Cottrell, Vice Principal Yates, and Ms. Tina Williams, who runs the after-school program over there, as well as Principal Carter from Cordova Villa. Without their support and their collaboration, these productions and this Theater Arts program would not have been possible. But again, we are so proud of the hard work of our students and their performance tonight is a wonderful reminder of how the arts inspire confidence, creativity, and joy in our students. So without further ado, please enjoy "In a Tree" from Flat Stanley Jr. We have Vincent, Serenity, Tina, Ebony, and Jessica.
That was amazing, kids. Take my money, take all my money. We need to see more of this. Good answer. Next up, we have Agenda Item 5.2.
Mayor Pulapotti, I think the kids might want to have their picture taken with the council, if that's okay. They mentioned that earlier, as a possibility.
Come on, kids. Bring your parents. Come on, parents. You wanted to do all the work.
I don't know who has the pleasure of trying to follow that, but good luck.
A very worthy cause, actually, takes the chance to follow that. Do you want me to announce the next topic? We're going to, the next one is for Tara Claven, sorry, Tara, for the Whisker Warriors 10th Anniversary.
Woo, Tara, come on up.
From kids to kittens.
Yeah, kids to kittens.
The only thing that would work.
I think you got a shot.
So Tara speaks for those that cannot speak for themselves. She supports those that cannot support themselves. She supports all our fur friends. And so, we're giving this proclamation in recognition for the 10th anniversary of Rancho Cordova Whisker Warriors. This is commonly referred to as Rancho Cordova Whisker Warriors that has served the city of Rancho Cordova and surrounding communities for 10 years. They have utilized strategic partnerships with the city of Rancho Cordova, the county of Sacramento, and other like-minded nonprofits to facilitate free or low-cost spay neuter for 4,0637 cats, dogs, and rabbits since 2015. They also assisted vaccine procedures for pets and homeless animals. So now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Rancho Cordova does recognize the 10th anniversary of the Rancho Cordova Whisker Warriors and the hundreds of volunteer hours they dedicate each year to providing education, resources, and services in an effort to promote the well-being of animals. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, just a little bit. Well, dear mayor, vice mayor, city council, city attorney, and all city staff, because you buy us all help, okay? On behalf of all Whisker Warriors, I thank you for this honor. I would not be here, and we would not be here, without Scotty Moore's great love for cats. She started it all. And once she died, through the support from all of you and our proactive animal services team, we are here today. 10 years. I just can't even believe it. And so, I believe that Rancho Cordova has the best animal care program of any city in our region, maybe the whole state. I don't know of everybody's, but, and we're very proud to be part of this team. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Tara.
And so, I think we all want a picture, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah, we should.
Come on up.
She's how you find the girl. All right, on one, two, three, Whisker Warriors. One, two, three.
Whisker Warriors!
Good job.
Okay. Big smiles, everybody. We got the dog in, we got everybody in. Okay, ready? On three, ready? One, two, and three. What a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Next up, we have a proclamation to the Seroptimist International of Rancho Cordova and Gold River. So this proclamation is the Seroptimist International of Rancho Cordova and Gold River in honor of Women's History Month. So Seroptimist, loosely translated from Latin as Best of Woman, Best for Women, was formed in 1921. And the Seroptimist International for Rancho Cordova and Gold River has served the city and surrounding communities for nearly 15 years by equipping women and students with tools to take control of their future and to write their own history. In 2024 alone, the club has saved one female veteran from committing suicide through its holiday stockings for veterans mission with Maitre VA Hospital and her six-year-old daughter, and has referred another trafficking survivor to a local organization for mental trauma and PTSD treatment. Now, as you can see, the Seroptimist does a lot of work and helps the women that are in need. Women usually don't speak up for what they need, and this is a great cause, and we're truly honored for what you do and to have you here today and that we can help you in any way that we can. Thank you for everything that we do. So with that, I set my hand and cause a seal of the city of Rancho Cordova to be affixed. The 17th day of March 2025, we give this proclamation.
Yeah, I was like, come on, guys. I'm not a club of one. There's more than one of us.
You're shy.
You shouldn't be shy.
You shouldn't be camera shy. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys should stand up here.
Yeah, I would like to, I would not like to think of giving women a voice. Oh. I didn't know that, Rose. Okay. I don't like to think of giving women who don't have a voice, helping them have a voice. I think all women have a voice. They may need a little bit of help amplifying it. So that's, that's my philosophy. Just some real quick statistics about the breakdown of all the women and girls that we've helped in our 15 years, well, it's going on 16 years now. We have helped over almost 1,400 high school girls, almost 700 adult women, almost 500 middle school girls, 250 secondary school. We didn't, the project was kind of covered both high school and middle school, so I couldn't have the breakdown, but 250 in middle school in general, or secondary school in general. Over 1,300 at-risk students, that's girls and boys, and we've helped over, a little over 300 veteran, female veterans. So that's about 4,400, a little over 4,400 women that we've helped over the last 15 years. So I'm very proud of that. And my club has a lot to do with that. We have amazing members that are some of the most hardest-working women I've ever had the privilege to work alongside. So thank you very much for this honor.
Next, we move on to public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. I'd like to ask the city clerk to announce the public comment and ask if there are any public comments.
Yes, we do have public comments, and I'm going to start with the general public comment, Sarah Norris, who sent an email and has been posted on the city's website, has been distributed to the city council, and it's been placed in a binder in the back of the council chambers. I'd also like to call on the next speaker, and that is Sean Daly.
Good evening, mayor, council members, guests. I'm Sean Daly, Battalion Chief with Metro Fire. I work right down the street here, Battalion 14. As you know, we have three shifts. I represent the A shift, which makes me a proud resident of the city of Rancho Cordova for at least one-third of my life. I'd like to first off, thank you guys for having us tonight, having us as your fire department, and giving me the opportunity to just share a couple of quick updates with you. First, I'm pleased to announce that on Friday, March 28th, Metro Fire will be breaking ground on our Zinfandel First Responder Training Facility. It's our Phase 3 of our build-out out there, and this event will take place at the facility starting at 9:30 in the morning. I'll leave a flyer here with invite information for you and some more details. But as you know, this marks an important date for us, as this has been what we call a legacy project, and it's several years in the making. So it's a, it's a big step forward and we're proud of that. So hope you guys can join us there. Additionally, we have announced our dates for our annual youth fire camp. This year it's going to take place June 17th through 20th. And Fire Camp is a week-long program designed for children ages 11 through 13, which in addition to providing them some basic fire and water safety and being a really fun week, it also exposes them to a number of challenges which reinforce teamwork, self-confidence, and other important life skills. We'll be opening registration for that soon, so please check our website and our social media sites for additional details. And again, I'll leave a flyer with you here. So again, thank you guys for having us. If you have any questions or comments, we'll be here all night. Thank you.
Is Leslie Cottrell here in the council chambers?
Good evening, Mayor Pulapotti and Vice Mayor Gatewood and city council members. My name is Leslie Cottrell. I'm the principal at Williamson Elementary, and this is Kaylee Yates, my assistant principal and a proud Rancho Cordova resident as well, who went to Rancho Cordova Schools. I wanted to come up and thank you this evening for continuing to support the Community Enhancement Fund program that is NorCal School of the Arts at Williamson. What a wonderful program it's been for our community and our students, giving them a voice and an opportunity to experiment in an art form that we don't have the ability to do for ourselves at this time, and we're grateful for your continued support of that program. Thank you.
So I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
So I was asking the lady earlier, Lorette Gaberman?
Yes.
Started all of the plays at Villa when Villa was still open.
At the Cordova Lane Elementary School.
I'm sorry, you're right, at Lane, and then brought them over to Williamson. And I can't tell you how many times I've taken grandkids to see, I mean, they're all grown now, but you know, in the past, to see all of the wonderful programs that you all have put on, and I really appreciate your keeping up that tradition at Williamson and now at Villa.
Yes, she does as well. She is actually one of the loudest supporters of arts at our school as well as our district. She's still our corral director for the district, but she's retiring this year.
I asked. It struck me she might have retired, so.
Not yet, but she will be, yes. This is her last year.
Okay, so given that it's happening at Villa, has anybody thought about programs in other languages?
Like theater programs?
Yeah.
That's a good idea. We could bring that up with NorCal and see if they can support it. We have a multicultural night that is this Wednesday from 5:30 to 6:30 if anyone wants to stop by and see some of our families or students doing some small performances. Last year, we had some songs, some poetry, a few dances, and there were lots of displays of cultures that are from around the world that are represented right at Williamson.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you, and thank you again for your support. Next speaker is Mark Berry. Following Mark will be Sarah Norris and Betsy Wayland.
Can I use an overhead projector?
You may. Rachel will turn it on for you.
Hi, I'm Mark Berry, Tiffany Farm Homeowners Association. I'm here again about continuing to talk to the city council about the degradation of the SEQA environmental baseline on the Cassus property. In April 2023, there was an agreement with TruMark that they will identify protected species, including the elderberry, and that no weed abatement will be done within 30 feet of the elderberry bushes. Now pursuant to my recent complaint here a couple weeks, or a couple months ago, I guess, on April 2023, the agreement was violated, and then in response, I received this from the city representative in January 2025, that the 41-acre site was mowed for fireweed abatement purposes. This is wrong, according to the TruMark letter. The staff observed that mowing occurred outside of the elderberry buffer areas. This is also wrong, and the area at the northernmost part of the site was mowed, was not identified as an elderberry buffer area. This is also wrong. Now, in February 2025, TruMark's attorney sent me this letter saying that this wasn't weed abatement, but it was part of erosion control requirements that this work was being done, and that none of the mowing damaged any protected plants, including valley elderberry. That's also wrong. And that the red-tagged plants were, well, they identified red-tagged plants, and they called the city, and I called city Wilton Ranchery, and falsely reported the damage to the elderberries. That's also wrong. Here's the city easement map, and as you can see, Area 1, 2, and 3 are on the easements. Area 1 I have here, it's the northernmost part, and it's identified as an elderberry buffer area. In January 2025, this was mowed, basically, and as you can see by the orange fence here, this was inside the elderberry buffer zone, contrary to the city's letter. Okay, this is Area 2. That's an elderberry plant there. And then in 2023, that elderberry plant was actually mowed within its 30-foot area, and you can see that that's a line there between them. And we reported this to the city, and the city came out and investigated this, so they knew they were there. Now here is in January 2025, when I reported the incident, and as you can see, the red flags there, and those bushes and elderberry are gone. Here's Area 3, okay? This is 2023, is the elderberry bush. I met under there with the city Public Works Director, and again, this is within the, you can see, this is the 30 feet. They mowed within the 30 feet there. can see, this is the 30 feet, they mowed within the 30 feet there. Then again, in January, okay, 2025, the red flags that TruMark mentioned.
Please wrap up your comments.
Yes, are mowed down, basically. So I just want to say that the city should have contacted me before they got involved with misinformation of TruMark and publicly slandering me. This record needs to be corrected. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sarah Norris.
I don't have anything to show there.
You'll have up to three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, and esteemed council members of Rancho Cordova. My name is Sarah Norris. I'm a small business owner, botanist, arborist, and I have been an environmental consultant for over 20 years. I live in Sacramento County. Yesterday, on March 16th, I walked the public easement of the TruMark property in the Tiffany Farms Homeowners Association easement, and I observed elderberry shrubs recently damaged and cut. Some cotton-damaged shrubs have red ribbons tied around them, the stounds or orange fencing erected around the shrubs. Elderberry shrub is an obligate host plant for the valley elderberry longhorn beetle, also known as VELP. VELP is listed as threatened, as a threatened species pursuant to the Federal Endangered Species Act. Elderberry shrubs are capable of reproducing quickly by seed and from root crown sprouts. Stems can grow over an inch in one growing season. In September of 2023, I observed established elderberry shrubs in areas not documented in the 2022 biological report prepared for the property. These same elderberry shrubs were cut and damaged upon inspection yesterday. Per the 2017 U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Guidelines, which provides a framework for assessing impacts of VELP, cutting and damaging elderberry shrubs may remove or destroy VELP eggs, larvae, and may reduce the health and vigor of the shrub. In an email dated April 27th, 2023, between TruMark and the city, this email states that prior to mowing or weed-whipping activities, elderberry shrubs are to be identified to prevent this damage. Although a biological monitor was present during weed abatement conducted on January 27th, 2025, elderberry shrubs were not identified. It is a standard practice that the biological monitor will survey an area in its entirety if an activity may occur that could result in damage to an elderberry shrub. A qualified biologist should be able to identify an elderberry shrub year-round. The TruMark property is considered suitable habitat for VELP, and the shrubs are likely occupied by VELP per the Fish and Wildlife Service Guidelines. Any activity that adversely impacts an elderberry shrub may also adversely impact VELP. Damage to the elderberry shrub is considered take of the species under the Federal Endangered Species Act definition. Thank you.
Good evening, city council. My name is Betsy Wayland, and I'm a board member of Save the American River Association. Over a couple of months in 2023, Save the American River Association, the Environmental Council of Sacramento, and Preserve the American River spent many hours with city staff, in particular Mr. Runner and Mr. Stricker, Striker, excuse me, regarding TruMark Corporation's pre-construction activities on what was formerly the Cassis property. After many hours of discussion, it was agreed between staff, Sarah, Ecos, and Par that TruMark be required to protect the elderberry shrubs on the property with a 30-foot buffer. On April 27th, 2023, an email communication was sent from Mr. Striker reiterating that TruMark had agreed to, in part, the requirement that no weed abatement will be done within 30 feet of the elderberry bush. This is obviously, obviously, they're not abiding by the agreement, and I would hope, I would just hope that city council fully expects people, corporations, businesses, developers who come to the city to do business abide by the city's rules and regulations. Have respect for that. We took a lot of time with the city staff, the city staff took a lot of time with us, and when, when, all we will ask is that there be a level playing field and that agreements be respected. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Next speaker is Brenda Guston. Following Brenda will be Sage Pasquale, Kathy Birch, Helen Wayland-Bishaw, and James Garcia. Brenda?
Thank you. I'm going to use the overhead on it as well. Good evening. It's disappointing to bring this subject about the clearing of 41 acres of the TruMark property without a permit to you. On January 27th, I heard machinery on the Tiffany Farms Homeowners Association easement alongside the Cassis property. I found workers on the 15-foot pedestrian easement inside the elderberry barricades, cutting down protected elderberry bushes. I phoned Assistant City Manager David Quong, who answered, and I also received a phone call from Russell Ducharme. In April 2023, of you, as you've heard, Heidi Antonescu of TruMark agreed in writing with Albert Stricker to the following: "No more grading without a permit. A 30-foot perimeter abatement on the perimeter sides on the TruMark property by mowing, weed whipping, or similar method per the Sacramento Metro Fire Department buffer requirement would occur. To follow, the 30-foot hiking and riding easement on the Cassis side is staked by mowing or weed-whipping the alignment and general width of the easement through the side. Prior to performing any work, they would identify protected species, including elderberry bushes, et cetera. They would use orange fencing or yellow tape as a protected measure, and ensure that the elderberry bushes are not encroached upon by their contractors performing the above work, and that no weed abatement will be done within 30 feet. The orange fencing has been in place for over a year, yet the workers were cutting down elderberry bushes inside and in several places on the Tiffany Farms and public easements, not even on their own property. This negligent and destructive behavior included the cutting down of elderberry bushes marked with red tape, as if the red tape indicated they were to be cut down. Also disturbing is Mr. Quong's later incorrect assurance that TruMark's monitors were fully aware of the species' protected status and that TruMark was following all rules and agreements made. This is not true. Why did the city meet only with TruMark and not Mark Berry or myself on the easements to be shown the damage? TruMark continues to violate city regulations on this property municipal codes. When will the city enforce the municipal codes that clearing more than one acre of land requires a grading permit and secret review with public comment so that protected species may be fairly identified? For the last few years, it seems the city lacks the knowledge or concern to make TruMark the property owner adhere to these regulations. My time is valuable. I request a response, please. Not this minute, but later, please."
Next speaker is Sage.
Good evening, and thank you very much for the opportunity to comment and for the service you provide to the citizens of Rancho Cordova, myself included. I'm here to bring your attention to some business practices of TruMark Homes that are described in online forums. These complaints make it clear that TruMark Homes is a business to take the money and run and does not take responsibility for their negligence. So if they were to build in this city, the citizens and government of Rancho Cordova would be left to clean up their mess. The first complaint is regarding dust produced by trademarks TruMark's grading activities. A nearby resident of the grading complained that there was so much dust, the wife couldn't leave the house without a mask on, and everything is so covered with dirt and dust, it looks like we live in a desert, and the cars are covered in dirt. After two hours, windshields need to be cleaned to drive. A fellow citizen recommended to the complainer that they contact the city to make sure TruMark was following requirements for watering the construction site, for ensuring there weren't more construction vehicles going back and forth than allowed, et cetera. Other complaints included: "A breaker that did not trip when it should have." The homeowner pointed out, "If I didn't come home during the first two incidents," notice these are multiple incidents, "fire can happen because the breaker did not trip off, fire that could spread not only in my home, but in my community." Another homeowner complained, "I've had nothing but issues with the home and no resolution." This homeowner's issues included: "A sinkhole that developed because TruMark had failed to install a drainage pipe, a cabinet that fell on top of her refrigerator, leaking through sliding doors and windows." The homeowner says, "I'm worried about my kid's health since it's not being addressed properly in terms of drying and mold. Moving here has been a nightmare, trying to get ahold of anybody at TruMark to respond. I'm considering a real estate attorney for resolution." Another complaint said, "I've discovered several building code violations by the builder, and I notified them of these defects with a detailed list of the codes they violated. It's been over two months, and they've not given me a plan to resolve the issues. I believe this to be in violation of the Right to Repair Act SB 800." TruMark's response to this complaint started with this sentence: "We are thankful to this homeowner for alerting us to a couple items originally missed by our staff and the city during the construction process." Another complainant put down money for a new home, but requested a refund per their contract with TruMark when construction delays occurred. The depositor told TruMark that the delay would not work for them and their family. Quote, "I have asked about my refund due to the delays and how this home no longer works for my family, and have been told that..."
Please wrap up your comments.
"...they, TruMark, are not responsible for anything."
Next speaker is Kathy Birch. Following Kathy will be Helen Wayland-Bishaw.
Our friend Helen is going to help us with the visuals. I can't do more than one thing at a time. Happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody. Thank you for letting me share my thoughts. I'm Kathy Birch. I live in the Tiffany West community. In June of 2022, TruMark posted notices that weed abatement would be occurring in the former Cassis family-owned orchard in the lower level by the river. This seemed like a good idea, rather than using power mowers or equipment that could spark a fire. The first few days were fun to watch the sheep and goats at a distance. Some of the goats actually climbed up into the walnut trees and stood on their hind legs to try to eat some of the walnuts. The animals stirred up a lot of dust, and sometimes they would run as a herd, and the temporary fencing was supposed to be electrified to detour, knocking it down, and the sheepherders would move the fence lines so they had evenly cut grass in larger areas. In the evening of June 21st, some of the animals did knock down the fence, and in a matter of minutes, approximately 400 sheep, including some goats, invaded the street and the front yards of Sterling Park Drive all the way to Rod Bodry Drive. At first, it was surreal and amazing, and the neighbors came out to see and wave off the animals off their lawns and flower beds. The sheepherder and three dogs came into our street and quickly encouraged the animals to return to the orchard. Unfortunately, the main route back to the orchard was over my landscaping front yard and, as I live at the end of the dead-end street, and the dead-end barricade that marks the end of the street is too low for the sheep to go under and too high to jump over. When it was over, there was sheep poop everywhere, in the streets, in the sidewalks, and in the yards. My property suffered the worst damage due to the being the main route to and from the orchard, which I think we have marked there, right? Yeah, that's our main. Yeah, okay. Anyway, when I submitted a request to TruMark with pictures of the damages, receipts, and estimates totaling approximately $750, TruMark responded, "No one else made a complaint, so we're not going to consider yours." No phone calls or visits from them came to research my claim. What an incredible difference between TruMark and the developer for the future community civic center. That developer submitted several designs and requested community input. That developer seems to care about our citizens in Rancho Cordova. TruMark does not. Thank you. I'll give it later. You can reset it? I will. Okay, I am Helen Wayland-Bishaw. I live in the area, have been there since 1983. Before there were houses in front of my house, there was the archaeological dig taking place, and Dr. Cassis and I had conversations, and he said, "Sure, you can walk over my property," even though he had no trespassing sign. So I've had the right to walk over that property since 1983. So TruMark changing the game plan on us, I think violates the law, just as it does for how long Mark's been doing it. This is what I am going to overview. Since day one, when TruMark put their application and they weren't in compliance, I went to the address they had listed to where the business was. They were not a resident there. The application included, I think her name is Andrea Cassis, and the address they gave was the address for the smud utility, not a home. So their application had two issues on it that really showed that they don't follow the rules. TruMark also gave a tree inventory. The portion of the trees that they were saving were on private property. When they came to the abatement of the weeds, I was in Mark Berry's property on the Rod Bodry area, and all of a sudden, a dove came flying over the fence. I took a picture of it and said to Mark, "Oh, a dove came over the fence when they were cutting down your elderberries behind the house." And he said, "They're ground nesters." So they should have roped off that area. The elderberry bushes that are behind the Rod Bodry house is always being cut down. It's never been fenced off. When they brought the sheep in, I get a text message, "Helen, the sheep are getting out on Rod Bodry." So I go out to block them from coming up the street and to go back down Sterling. And additionally, when I was mowing the easement between the Tiffany Farms and the Rod Bodry house, I found all sorts of sheep poop that ran up along the frontage in front of that house on Rod Bodry. The sheep were out of control. There was so much dust that my house sits away from the orchard, not on it, my solar panels had to be cleaned. I'm real picky about my solar panels. So I think we need to reconsider with what Sage said about problems they've had with TruMark and other areas. The city needs to have aggressive requirements for TruMark if they're going to allow them to build, even though TruMark purchased the property, knowing that floodways can't be developed on, and that's 25 of the 41-plus acres. Thank you.
Next speaker is James Garcia.
Hello, James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I also wanted to say Happy St. Patrick's Day for all of you out there. Hopefully, you're all wearing green, because otherwise, there's kids that were here that could have been pinching you, but I guess not. And since we don't have a council member anymore that really liked the airshow, I also wanted to kind of say, hey, we're having a Capitol Airshow this weekend, so, because I always enjoy the planes, because I have a great view of them, unless something's built there. But that was kind of the main thing, is just wanted to say, hey, don't forget about that. You're going to have to worry about the noise going all over town, which, again, I love because I grew up here when it was an Air Force Base, so it's actually a positive thing for me to bring back good memories, so thanks for having it and supporting it, because I do like it. Hopefully, everybody else does too, but that's pretty much it. Just wanted to say, thanks.
Mayor Polpotti, that's all the public comment I have for general public comment.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to council reports, starting with Councilmember Little.
Nothing to report, other than Micah knows. I was buying a six-pack of White Claw this weekend, and I was haymistred by undercover I was buying a six-pack of White Claw this weekend, and I was haymistred by undercover ABC. Don't worry, I just laughed. I didn't take the $20 bill they handed me. But now, in retrospect, I wish I took it and said, yeah, and just came back and walked back to my car and took their money. So, yeah, that was a very serious problem we apparently have in my neighborhood, which doesn't exist, and it happened.
So you seem like a nice guy who would help, or a bad guy who would help?
Ah, I was wearing goofy flip-flops and beanie. I looked like someone who's willing to risk it all, probably. But anyways, thank you, ABC, for keeping my neighborhood safe.
Was this your no-host bar preparation?
It was the day after.
Ah, day after, all right.
Oh, yeah, we didn't need to talk about that.
Do we need to talk about that, or we'll let that go?
I didn't know what no-host bar meant. I thought it meant literally no bar. And so we had this event Friday, and I bought alcohol for my table. And right when I walk in the doors at City Hall, there's literally a bar, you just have to pay for it. I just don't get invited to no stuff like this. Now I do. So I'm learning.
Was it for this event?
Yeah.
No-host bar means, yes, there will be beer, so.
Such a great learning experience.
I know. Thirty-two-year-old councilman, learning a lot.
He's gonna love when he starts eating chicken there. Remember that rubber chickens?
Thirty-two, that's, I think that's age I was elected. Huh, there we go. All right. So I assume I'm next. Sorry, Madam Mayor. I was at the CCC, the Congressional Cities Conference in DC, for most of the last week. I can tell you, being past president of the NLC is a good job compared to being president, because instead of having 60 things to do a day while you're there, it's only about 30. And you can actually say no to some things. So I had a good, good trip, and of course, it's now free to the city from here on in, so that's a good thing, too. So as past president, I was invited to do some fun things, had a meeting at the White House, had a meeting with US senators from California, and Vice President Vance came and talked to our meeting. We had about 3,000 city officials there from all over the, all over the country. And we sent about 1,000, we did about 1,000 Capitol Hill meetings with those members, lobbying on a variety of things. Probably the number-one concern for the National League of Cities is the tax-free status of municipal bonds, which is at risk as they try to figure out how to balance the budget. They could save $25 billion a year by making municipal bonds taxable instead of tax-free, as they sort of, I think, always have been, at least for a very long time have been. The problem is, if they did that, it would cost all the cities in the country, if you wanted to add it up, about three times that amount in additional interest charges if we were to borrow the exact same amount of money using municipal bonds. So, you know, that would, I think, if you do the math, it figures out to be something like a $6,500 tax on every household or family over a 10-year period. So I think, I'm guessing, based on the feedback I got at meetings, that it's unlikely they will push that button to try to save some money on tax-free municipal bonds, but it is, it is a particular risk. There's also something relevant to us here in California called the SALT deduction, state and local tax deductions. So when you're filling out your federal income tax, you can take a deduction based on what you paid in the state. In tax reform, I don't know how many years ago, that was limited to like 10% of your income. Well, of course, in California, a lot of our, is it five? I thought it was 10. But in any case, whichever it may be, our tax rates obviously are higher than that in California, so we're not able to deduct all of our state taxes that we pay on our federal income tax return. The White House, however, is in favor of raising that number, and we will try to see what happens, because it's been a threat, I think, ever since the Obama administration, though these two items have been a threat for the National League of Cities. The second one is of particular interest to mainly coastal states that tend to have higher tax rates. Let's see. Oh, the other fun thing from the meeting was, my son was there. My son Charles has been unable to participate in most of my stuff at the National League of Cities, because he's a college student, and that schedule doesn't match the NLC, but this one did. It was spring break. So he and my wife came to DC, and while he was there, the NLC staff saw him there, and he had done a research paper for them over the summer on forever chemicals, PFAS chemicals. They saw him there, and they said, we're doing a session on PFAS, can you give a talk? So like, a day later, he's standing at the NLC meeting giving a talk that I couldn't even see, because I had to go to that White House meeting, I mentioned, that I had been invited to go and chat with him about some things. So he had a great time. I think it was a good experience for everyone. So that was one of my best NLC meetings ever, just from my participation, having my son and wife know, that was a good thing. RCIA met last week. We talked to the Park District about their facility priorities. So they have an optimization plan that they released more than a year ago, I think. It's been presented to us here maybe two and a half years ago. RCA had had a meeting where we were projecting, because everyone, all the youth sports are growing in size, and we had this sort of informal conversation about what do your facilities look now compared to what this growth rate looks like? And we realized in the room in December, last December, we got a problem, because we're about to exceed capacity. And each of us had thought about that, I think, individually, but as a group, we hadn't like stepped back and said, wait a second, what are we gonna do? The optimization plan the Park District has done doesn't really account for, like, real numbers of youth participation. They took a sample, and they're sort of measuring versus some standards maybe in the country. And as new parks come along, they go down a checklist and try to add facilities in, but there's not really like an optimization for youth sports in that. So I know Micah has talked about, you know, the city's gonna have to do some kind of an inventory as well to sort this out, but we did have a meeting with them. It answered some questions, but I think it leaves a lot of questions still out there about how we best meet that need, because we can't be running out of soccer fields for soccer, or not having cricket, cricket fields available when we're gonna have a cricket league, and not having places to play youth basketball. That's a crisis like as of today. There isn't enough youth basketball. Isn't that correct, Councilman Gatewood? I think I've heard something about that from you. Okay, good enough. Finally, we had the CCC awards with a no-host bar. Sorry.
It was uncalled for. Stop picking on the young guy. He's doing his best.
He's sitting over here by me, and his district's next to mine, so we're good. We gave out some awards, and I'm gonna name them here, because I don't think we have yet. So this, these are the community awards, the communities, really, community service awards for 2025. Inspiring Rancho Cordova, Madeline Sanderson won that. We Could Not Have Done Without You, Done It Without You, the Rancho Cordova Vips, those are volunteers in partnership with the sheriff, won that award. We Couldn't Have Done It Without You. Outstanding Teen Service, Valeria Aguilar won that. She's one of the mock kids at Cordova High. Distinguished Community Business Partner was Blue Shield, because they have turned out volunteers, and written checks. Outstanding Service to Youth was Eric McCann. He is the varsity soccer coach, boy soccer coach at Cordova High, has been there for 20 years, has been named like Section Coach of the Year more than once. He's like an icon of coaching at Cordova, but actually for soccer in Northern California. Distinguished Community Service Organization was. It Takes a Lincoln Village, something the city had a hand in starting, and it's a great local organization we, we're all really proud of. Distinguished Community Service Individual was Maxine Yoshida. She is involved with the Food Locker and does some extra cool things there. They have like a Maxine store for people at the Food Locker. And finally, the biggest award, the Rancher Cordovan of the Year, was won by Kevin Sims, who is the high school music director at Cordova, and also a, a local and regional sort of icon for providing all the sort of musical stuff that he does at Cordova, all the different groups that perform, as well as really raising the profile of Rancho Cordova with the success he has in music. So that was the lineup, and three of us were there for that, so we had a good showing. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Budge?
I completely agree with David. I want to congratulate the community council and all of the volunteers. The Film Festival, our CalCap Documentary Film Festival also deserves congratulations for an enormous, successful weekend. Rancho Cordova Little League deserves an award for a huge opening day celebration. And David, they were always one of the largest little leagues in the county or in the region, and I assume it still is, because the, the little kids were never-ending. And congratulations to the Anatolia and that area, because we stood outside on Wednesday in a 40 mile an hour wind to do a groundbreaking for a third elementary school in Rancho Cordova. Happy St. Patty's Day to everybody. Regional Transit was absolutely fascinating. We had a presentation from a lady from World Relief Sacramento, who came and talked about all of the refugee and immigration and special immigrant visa settlement here in, in the region, and the ways in which regional transit is important to that in terms of being able for them, being able to, for them to get to their, get to the places that they all need to be. And I told Micah, if, Micah said that the city has been working with some of these people. Jen might know. And if they want, if we want them to do a, a presentation here at City Council, I'm sure they would come and do that. And, and the last thing I would request is that we close tonight in honor of a wonderful gentleman named Jim Carpenter. It's not that he was important in Rancho Cordova, but he was very much a very important figure in the Sacramento business community. He was actually Sacramento of the Year one year. But the reason I remember Jim and his wife, Fennet, so well is the fact that quite some time ago, during the Carter administration, we were all invited to come and meet Rosalind Carter in a room at the White House. And of course, there was lots of pictures taken. And every time I would see Jim and Fennet, they would accuse me of having my portrait on their living room wall, because we were all in this picture together with Rosalind Carter, and it was on the wall in their living room. So I would ask that we adjourn tonight in memory of Jim Carpenter.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gatewood?
All right. Happy Ash Wednesday to all my Catholics. Happy St. Patty's Day to all the people that need to chase snakes out of Rancho. Snakes. Hey, our only Irishman, we got Joe Little. And then, of course, Happy Holly Day. I did the SAC Metro cable, so we have the S-CIVA awards coming up. It was cool, because I got to see my kids in, what's that competition that you always have the kids do? The Acadaca? So I didn't know this, but my son was at Acadaca competing. He'd been gone a couple times, and so he, him and his food, it was funny watching them celebrating after doing a math test. It's hilarious. I'm like, in your face! Got all the multiplication right. Hilarious. And then, so we have a bunch of Rancho Cordova kids at the CIVA awards. If you're interested in going, that'd be great. We'd love more people showing up. And then, lastly, I just want to say thank you. We got a new planning commissioner, his name's Elliot, and Elliot took his own time and money and gave all of the sixth grade new hoodies that say, I love Rancho Cordova. And we don't get a lot of, well, we get a lot of community involvement, but it's nice to see someone really giving back for no good reason, that the fact is that he went to the school, he believes in the school, and believes in taking care of kids at Rancho Cordova. So now, all of them have blue-white, black-white, and, and black-and-white hoodies that say, I love Rancho Cordova, and have little hearts on them. And I like any positive plus we can get for our city out there. That's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I'll start.
And go airshow. Everyone needs to get tickets. The Blue Angels are coming. It's a big deal, and it's not gonna be 1,000 billion degrees, where you can levitate in the heat. It's the first time. Everyone needs to go, because we want to, we want to keep Angela Terry happy and keeping it in cool weather. Cool weather airshow.
Yeah, their, their lead aircraft hit the air today.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's cool.
Like four o'clock or so.
It was pretty obvious.
It was very obvious. So James and everybody, we hope we'll see you out there.
So I'll start. Happy St. Patrick's Day. I am happy that 90% of this room of women are wearing green. All the rest of you will get pinched today.
Mio, can you put someone out front to pinch them as they're way out?
Yeah, yeah. He didn't wear green either.
What?
He got socks. So I gave welcome remarks to the launch of the Birth Equity and Infant Health Mobile Clinics. This was started by a woman named Ithika, who faced hardships when she was giving birth to her kids, and she started this program that ensures that all women and infants, regardless of background, income, or locations, have access to the healthcare they need. It was attended by Dr. Ramos, the General Surgeon of California. Next, I attended, I'm sorry, I met with Diane Rogers, Amanda Norton, and Tracy from Community Strong Strategies to talk about the Talent Pipeline Project, the Talent Pipeline Management Project, because we're investing a key significant amount into this, and I wanted to make sure that we have the details on the key companies, timelines, and the ROI for this project. My goal is to make sure that at least, not at least, over 50% of the people that go through this program have been placed. And that is a pretty high number, given that our past workforce development people have been around the range of 20 to 30%. Next, I attended the South by Southwest Conference in Austin. I could not attend the NLC conference, where I am a part of the Subcommittee for Tech, but I chose to go to the South by Southwest. It was a really unique conference that I expected it to be, you know, not what I expected. I thought it's gonna be more film and arts, but actually, it was a lot of different sessions that were on there. I had a chance to network with fellow officials. We discussed innovative city solutions. I attended sessions on online security using messaging app Signal. We talked about AI jobs, you know, how data centers may be beneficial for the city, and attended a podcast with one of my favorite hosts, Sean Rameshram, and also went to a session where, why journalists go to war and cover those? You know, why would they risk themselves to cover war? And it was really insightful to attend that. And I also got to serve as a judge on a Shark Tank-style tech pitch competition. You know, there were a lot of young folks over there with startups that were pitching their idea, and I got to, you know, do the tech pitch, but I was asked to be a bad cop, but I couldn't do that. I asked Nigerian questions. And so they're really happy with us. The person that won it actually got $10,000, but the win for us is all of them will now reach out to Micah and pitch their product and their services to our city, so we can see how we can streamline.
So we're doing our own version of it?
Yes, yes. And we may give them more than $10,000, so we don't have to sit through the whole Shark Tank style of it, or maybe he might make them. I don't know. Pass the baton. Some other key meetings that I did attend were, I went SAC Valley Division meeting, where I'm the treasurer. Councilmember Linda Budge and I were featured in the Comstock Magazine, so they had a leadership event downtown, so City Manager Micah Maria and I attended that. Councilmember Budge and I attended the groundbreaking ceremony for Grantline 208 Elementary School that will open in summer 2026. We are holding them accountable for timelines. I attended the GSEC Board Meeting downtown, you know, how to get more companies to invest in Rancho Cordova and the greater Sacramento area. Met with Sadie St. Lawrence, Sadie St. Lawrence, on my priorities for AI and how she can help with that in our city. Met with Supervisor Rosario to talk about updates on the county, you know, and how it impacts our city. One thing, one key takeaway she said is she watches a lot of council meetings across the region, and she's really impressed by Rancho Cordova and how we have such a good friendship on the dais and how we work so well together. So that was her feedback. At the South by Southwest Meeting, too, I want to ensure that we did meet some people who attended Rancho Cordova, thanks to past NLC precedent, and they were, they also passed on their congratulations on how well our city works. Next up, I attended the SDA Board Meeting, and an important change that was considered in that meeting was how state transportation funds are being distributed in this, among the greater County Region. So basically, they have a competitive process, and the funding would be allocated based on that, you know, who gets the better bid. But now, they've changed it But now, they've changed it. They proposed to change it to a set formula, which means that every two years approximately Rancho Cordova, based on our population and road miles, we would get about $1 million. And so this makes it easy from a staff perspective to plan projects, and it also reduces the amount of work needed to apply for this funding. So this was approved at the STA Board Meeting that I was in, and I think it's a good win for Rancho Cordova. Among community events that I did miss, I did miss the Great Volunteer Roundup. I missed the California, the documentary event. I missed the Festival of Colors, the holy festival at Haguen Park.
Boo.
Yes, but...
Good news. You are now the Vice Chair of the Cable Commission.
Oh, fantastic.
Some congratulations on that. I got you appointed. You're welcome.
Yeah, I should never send Garrett instead of me. So Garrett attended the Cable Commission instead of me. So just so you know, your council members and mayor is really out there in the community and, you know, taking up, you know, trying to represent Rancho Cordova wherever we can. So the mascot discussion that is going to come in later today, think about it. So all these events that we're going in, we will showcase Rancho Cordova, and a mascot would really help. Again, and two more events. I attended the BAPs Kite Festival, which is a celebration of spring, and this is the month of Ramadan. So I attended an IFtar event, which is where they break their fast, and that was yesterday. That's my two weeks. I'll pass on to the City Manager.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm a little tired from all of the great events that have been happening in Rancho Cordova. And I think, really, I want to spend some time more kind of talking about the fact that all of these great events, sometimes they're happening at the same time, so not everybody makes them to all the different places. But I think really recognizing all of the great things that are happening in Rancho Cordova, and I think I went to a few in some of these different events that I saw some of you at, but really just kind of want to take the time to recognize the different teams that are there, both on the council side, but also on the city staff time that participates and helps host all these different events. So really, congratulations on the last two weeks, because that was busy.
Thank you.
Did you meet with a couple of people who I nudged in your direction?
Yes, I did.
All right, good.
I did. And I also met with people that you did not nudge, but they proactively came up and said, "Hey, I know Rancho Cordova." We're going to move on to consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items council wishes to pull from consent calendar?
I know we have public comment on one item. Do you want it, do you want it pulled?
Should we pull 9.9?
Yeah. Okay, so let's pull that one. And I will move the balance of the consent calendar.
Let me check with the city clerk if we have any other public comments.
We only have a public comment for item 9.9 on the consent calendar.
Okay, then you have a motion and a second?
Who's the second?
David.
Thank you. Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yep.
Mayor Pula Potty?
Yes.
And item 9.9 is a resolution affirming our commitment to literacy, and the public comment is Eric Swanson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I am Eric Swanson, Superintendent, Folsom Cordova Unified School District. And for that reason, I want to first acknowledge the Williamson Wildcats, who entertained us at the beginning of this meeting. That is a tough act to follow. Also, Principal Cottrell and Assistant Principal Yates, who are here, Lancer alum, and we're working on legacy pins for all our legacy employees, and also acknowledge trustee Larrett, who's in the audience. I just wanted to spend a brief moment today on behalf of our students, educators, families, and the Board of Trustees, to extend a heartfelt gratitude for your unwavering commitment to student success in literacy. Students reading at or above grade level in third grade is a predictor of their life outcomes, their ability to access and thrive in a living wage job. Literacy leads to increased health and civic engagement. Your potential passage of item 9.9, resolving the city's commitment to literacy, demonstrates your profound dedication to ensuring that all learners in our community have the support and resources they need to develop strong reading skills. And as mentioned above, an essential foundation for lifelong learning, achievement, and success. By standing in partnership with Folsom Cordova Unified and the Sacramento County Office of Education, you are helping to create brighter futures for our students and strengthening the entire region. Thank you for your leadership and advocacy in making literacy a priority for Rancho Cordova and beyond. Thanks.
So I will move approval of item 9.9.
I'll second it with the comment that resolutions like this are easy. The work behind them and what it implies is hard. Luckily, we have already directed some resources towards those things, and we can sort of coalesce and realign, I think, around what's necessary. But I don't want this to pass, and we just say, oh, that's easy, you know, it was prostate awareness month or something, you know, next.
Sure.
This is, this is more like an action item than just a simple resolution.
Well, I agree with you, David. This is one of the reasons that I have always supported Rotary's bringing the B Street Theater out to our elementary schools and supported the efforts at, at Lane and Williamson to continue that kind of education for our kids, because the superintendent's absolutely right. We don't just learn to read by third grade level simply because we sat down in a quarter of the classroom and read. We learn by experiencing, even though, even though it's generally adults who learn by experiencing, our little kids learn by experiencing also. And there was one year at the U.S. Conference of Mayors where they advertised a box that parents could sign up to receive in the mail, which would have a whole bunch of tips on how to teach your kids to read, like at kindergarten and, and in those early years of elementary school. And you open the box, and the only thing that's in there is a mirror, because it's you who teach your kids to read, who help your kids learn to read. And it was, it was very moving. I actually did, when we were, when Ashley was doing videos, when I, one of the years that I was mayor, we did this video about that, and I've never forgotten that lesson.
So do you have a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yep, we like reading.
Mayor Pula Potty?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll move on to consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion.
Please pull 10.3.
I'm going to open for public hearing. And do we have any public comment?
We do have public comment.
Yeah, Mayor Pula Potty, I think, you know, for the one we have public comment on, on 10.3, there was a request from the developer to continue this item, and I think if we could start there and kind of have that request made from our team, and council can decide what to do at that point.
Okay.
Thank you. Nick Sos with the City Planning Department. Good evening, Mayor and council members. The applicant for the Jackson Properties project has requested to continue their item to a date uncertain. They do wish to take a little bit more time on the project and come back at a different date.
Thank you.
We do have public comment for item 10.3.
So do we still want, are they here?
They're here.
Do you still want to go ahead, given that the item is pulled? Whoever is speaking on this topic?
It's, well, in general, it's probably important to offer them the opportunity to do that, because sometimes people can't come back, and especially considering that this is continued to date uncertain, we don't know how long it'll be. But also, if staff is able, is going to be able to work with the developer, we need to hear everybody's concerns or comments.
Yeah. Like I said, if the, if the speaker wants to still speak on this topic, we're open for public comment.
So the public hearing is open?
Yes, it is open.
And Helen Waylon-Bachar?
Hi, I'm Helen Waylon-Bachar. I live over in the Tiffany area. First off, I'd like to find out, why would 10.3 be put on a roll call vote? When you look at the, what the builder wants to do, it's a major modification to add 25 tractor-trailer docks. I would think they'd need a new CEQA, because what they want to do, what they proposed was at a prior time, this is a major modification, they should have to go through all the initial applications, because you have environmental issues. 25 bays, they say there's going to be less traffic. Impossible. You have 25 bays, which is about five times the initial bays they had projected. That adds to pollution and particles in the air. It adds to more damage to the roads. It affects a lot of things. And for that reason, they want to change the location of the docks, is what I gather on this. It needs to be resubmitted, I believe, to the council, because it's a major modification. It would be a new application, as I see it. And I think for that reason, it should be disapproved. It's no different than what remedy wanted to do with the Amazon warehouse. You're, you're coming into an area that wasn't designed for that kind of traffic. We already have a lot of traffic leaving Rancho Cordova on roads, and yeah, they say we're going to have that overpass put in in the future. It's not now. It's not available now. This additional traffic of tractor-trailers causes noise, pollution, damage to the roads, and might be hazardous to the people in the area. Thank you.
Stacy, any other public comment?
We also have an additional public comment for 10.3 that was emailed by Jim Garcia that was distributed to the council, placed on the city's website, and has been printed in a binder in the back of the council chambers.
That's it?
For 10.3, yes.
Okay.
I guess I have a question for the city attorney with regards to...
Sure, I'll go ahead. I think the issue is you, you did not move the balance of the agenda. So you could, a motion would now be in order to move the balance of the agenda except for 10.3. And, go ahead.
Like to move the balance of the agenda except for 10.3?
So she'd need to close the public hearing on those two?
Yes.
Close the public hearing.
You're jumping ahead.
Got it. Slam the thing.
So may I have a motion for item, public hearing items 10.1 to 10.2?
I'll second Garrett's motion.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. City clerk, to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Little?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Pula Potty?
Yes. We'll move on to public hearing items, and they are none, so we'll move on.
Wait, 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 we're not through with this one. No, we're not through with 10.3.
Going back to agenda item 10.3?
Where the public hearing is still open.
She did close the public hearing.
She slammed it.
I thought your motion was to close the public hearing on 10.1 and 10.2, and that's what I seconded.
No, I closed the public hearing prior to the motion.
She, she did close the public hearing on 10.3. And a motion would now be in order, if you wanted to adopt the motion to accept the developer's request to table the item for 10.3, you could also make that motion.
Yes, that motion. I'd like to move motion 10.3, adopt, accept the moving of 10.3.
No, I think it's to, I think it's to move it to a date uncertain, your motion.
Yep, that one.
So at what point would, would staff like to hear council questions or concerns?
On, on agenda item 10.3?
Correct.
I, I think if there's, you know, things, as before this comes back, that would be good to hear, so that we hear if you have concerns, if we have that ability in the kind of process and the schedule, to hear some of those things that we should be thinking about and looking at as, as before it comes back for consideration. So if you have those today, we're happy to take that, if that's within the process.
Isn't the point that the applicant is going to come back, might be a, you know, already cover our concerns, so we're kind of...
It could, but you may not know what those might be. So I think the, you know, question would be to make sure that they're hitting the mark on things that you, that the council is thinking about before bringing it back.
Sounds good.
My major concern is, give us data that doesn't assume we're stupid. Don't nearly triple the number of loading docks and tell me it's going to result in seven less daily trips of truck traffic a day when you're tripling the number of loading docks. To me, when I get that evidence, and I'm told to rely on that, you either think I don't care or I'm stupid. So if the applicant wants to tell me it's better for the roads that they're tripling the loading docks, then show me. Don't tell me with data that is provably false. That's all.
So my concern is similar. I have worked with Ken Anderson's firm over 20 years, and, and I'm sure that their original traffic analysis was fine for, for nine loading docks. But from my perspective, the way in which this has been, I don't care if the square footage has shrunk. Number one, you've got 25 loading docks as opposed to nine. Number two, the building has been reconfigured so that it can house three tenants instead of one. And from my perspective as a planner, this is a complete intensification of the use. And reading the, the new traffic report, I don't know how in the world they came to the conclusion that there would be fewer trips. Yes, traffic reports generally focus on peak hour, and so they talked about peak hour in the morning and peak hour at night, but then they said, but then there's a sentence that said, "There will only be five peak hour trips," which is one every 12 minutes. So there's absolutely nothing in that, in that paragraph that this is logical at all. I also am concerned that, I know that our staff has a huge problem in translating the Sacramento County Code of 2003 to our code today, but I worked with the Sacramento County Code for over 20 years, and I do not believe that, that this intensification of use is consistent with some of what's cited in the staff report, like business and professional. It just, from my perspective, the whole thing makes no sense. And if, you know, it does say, if they're going to bring back a communications tower, they would have to come back and get an additional use permit for that. But did anybody ask, oh, yes, if having an additional communications tower right next door to them is consistent with their communications tower? I mean, that's an AI question for you guys, all right? That's a high-tech question. So whatever. But I, I, from my perspective, somebody would really have to justify the fact that increasing the, the potential use and increasing the potential traffic by threefold is not an intensification of use. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will now...
So now, I'll take my motion, we'll, we'll kick this thing, I'm sorry. We will accept the, the tenant's need to move it to a date uncertain. And, and now you've heard from the, the city council what we think.
I'll second, just with the added comment that, you know, changing the number of doors is a significant sort of design change in what this building looks like and feels in that neighborhood. So among other considerations, that's something we should put on the list.
Yeah. I think the applicant is pretty, should be pretty, should know by now and have that pretty clear guidance that, you know, we really need to see that there is no traffic increase from the first application to the next, because that is definitely a huge concern for the city.
And, and one last thing, one of the proposed mitigation measures, I've heard that the applicant was willing to do, was paint a crosswalk. We don't want people walking on that road if they're driving all those trucks there. Don't even bother with that.
Well, and, yeah, and the thing about, the thing about the fact that traffic analysis so often focuses on peak hour trips, yes, okay, but we know from the experience of, the experience of a current warehouse, that a lot of trips happen early in the morning before peak hour. before peak hour. And they go on all day long. All you have to do is be somebody who drives Zempindel, and there's trips all day long. So just focusing on peak hours may be typical for a traffic analysis, but it's not real world.
Thank you, Nick. We will move on.
Wait, 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 we got to finish.
We finished.
We need to do a roll call.
You got to do a roll call.
For an agenda that's actually moved. Yes, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Yes.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
Mayor Pula Potty.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, we move on to public hearing items, and they are none. So we will move on to regular calendar items, and I will ask the city clerk to announce the subject.
12.1, the subject is Active Transportation Plan Project Update.
We're going to get the staff report? Okay, Albert, slowly walking over. Oh, Drew, are you up? Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pula Potty and council members. My name is Drew Hart. I'm a senior transportation planner in the Public Works Department, and it is my pleasure to come before you tonight and give you an update on our active transportation plan and what we've heard so far from the community. The goal tonight is to provide some highlights of the engagement and listening that we've done so far to date, and share with you some of the themes that we've heard from the community, which have led us into a draft vision statement and goals. And that is the thing that we would like some feedback on tonight, is the draft vision statement and goals. There's no action item tonight, but I would like to hear from, some feedback from city council to make sure that we're going in the right direction. So as a refresher, what is an active transportation plan? Well, we currently have a pedestrian master plan from 2011 and a bicycle master plan from 2016. So we have a few, this is one of the few master plans or citywide planning documents that the city maintains. And at the end of this effort, where we are combining the pedestrian and the bicycle master plans into one plan and shared vision, the shared vision and the document that I'll bring back to you in about a year's time will include a list of projects mostly, with some policies and program recommendations, and a prioritization of those, to focus on ways to make walking, rolling, and biking in the city more attractive, more convenient, and safer for everyone. So the approach that we take in order to get to that end goal of a new document, just as a refresher, is we start with where the, what the data tell us today. An inventory of where we have sidewalks, where we have gaps, where we have crosswalks and where we don't. We talk to the community and find out what they want. We look at our collision history. We look at our trails and our bike lanes, and we try and identify kind of a starting point. That's kind of where we're at right now. We're in between this first phase and then the second phase, where we try and identify what the transportation network can look like in the future, making sure that our goals and policies are refined to project a future that we want, that align with the community's vision. And then identify specific projects as we move forward, and then, like I said, bundle it up to you in a cohesive document that you all will adopt, or have the opportunity to adopt about a year from now. So we're right in between that first phase and then going back out to the community for the second phase. So given that we've done a lot of, had a lot of conversations with the community over the past few months, we want to share some highlights with you. We've got out to what we call pop-up or tabling events, where we go to where people already are. We went to about over 10 events, whether there was a Good Neighbor Day, or another city-sponsored event, or a non-city-sponsored event with our boards, where we ask people for their, for their ideas and their feedback. And so these engaging boards are designed to get people's feedback in a short amount of time, quick snippets. And then we can get some, some feedback through that. We also co-hosted a workshop here at City Hall with the general plan update team in mid-October. It was extremely well-attended, and that's where we had a chance to have a little bit longer-form conversations, poring over the map and making dots and marks and saying what areas are challenging, what areas are really great that we want to try and emulate, and again, trying to drill down on what are the elements that people really like. Had a couple of chats with different groups while we walked. So there was a walk-along Routeier Road with the bicycle advocates of Rancho Cordova, Bark.
It's a nice fence.
That fence was brought up in that walking workshop, and then our code enforcement quickly responded and addressed that fence, as well as the trees that were hanging over right there. So it was a really fruitful discussion.
Might have been a good before and after of the visits that sometimes you get to out in the field, so.
Yes. I do have an after. I was just showing the during-the-walk audit. And then we also had a chance to, on the other side of town, there's an Anatolia mom walking group, and they have quite the following. And so I got a chance to walk with around 30 moms in pushing strollers and talk to them about some of their experiences walking with littles in our community, and accessing places that they want to get to from their neighborhood. It was really, really helpful conversation to have. We also held a few focus group meetings, in which we talked to some faculty members at Mills Middle School. We heard about some of their challenges with tardies and truancies, mostly related to insecurities around transportation. We talked to a few residents that are visually impaired and work for the Society for the Blind, and they know our community really, really well, and have lived in the community for decades. And that was a very enlightening conversation. And then as well as a night with some bicycle advocates, talking about the vision of what they want their community to look and feel like. And lastly, the last thing that we had throughout all of this time period was an online forum where we could, we solicited some information from folks through a survey, and then a map that was interactive, where you could drop a pin and tell us about that particular location, the good things, the challenging things, and everything in between. So I want to share with you some of the things that we heard throughout all of that. No surprise to anyone, we, most people in Rancho Cordova get around by car. But what was a little surprising was that almost 75% of people said, yeah, I really wish that I walked or biked more. And you'll see that these percentages don't add up, because we asked them, select all that apply. So if you're doing the math real quick, you'll see that it doesn't equal 100%. So people that wanted to walk or bike more, we wanted to dig in a little bit deeper and find out where, and why, and how. Going to work was a challenge, because we learned that the average commute time going to work from Rancho Cordova residents is roughly 20 to 30 minutes. That's a harder trip for most people to switch out for a ride on a bike or a walk. But they were interested in possibly changing part of their journey, maybe a walk or a bike ride to a bus stop or to light rail at 34%, or visiting family or friends at 40%. But the number-one destination or trip that they would like to swap for walking and biking instead of grabbing their car keys is running an errand, whether you're going to grab coffee, going to the pharmacy, or grabbing a $20 carton of eggs. They want to think that they can maybe do that by bike.
Slide it right in there. Yeah, we got it.
That's interesting, how come the second half of the...
Sorry, for those who missed it, we were commenting on the egg prices.
The second half did not come up on this, that's too bad. But I can, I can share out nonetheless. So then we ask people, what are the barriers? You say you have the desire to walk or bike more, but what are the actual barriers that are keeping you from it? Among other things, destinations being too far, the distance was the biggest barrier. We asked the same question, what are the barriers for bicycling? And the response there was fear of traffic collisions at 59%. They just felt like, even when there is a way to get there, there's still that fear of interacting with vehicles and having a collision. The themes that we heard for pedestrian design, we asked them, okay, what about the design can we focus on that'll make it better for, for walking in the city? Wider sidewalks was the top response, among better wayfinding, better crosswalks, lower vehicle speeds, and some sidewalk furnishings, place, you know, things that make it interesting and convenient to walk, whether it's a bench or pedestrian scale lightings and things like that. Similar question for bicycling, themes that we heard for bicycling was far and away, separated bikeways was the number one, like we see here on Rod Bodry. People felt much more comfortable bicycling when there was a physical separation between them and moving vehicles. Other elements that they, that we heard from the community is connectivity to light rail, more bike parking, traffic calm streets, and improving wayfinding again, and lowering vehicle speeds. Okay, that's all right. Okay, sounds good. And then there were themes that we heard repeated, but they didn't necessarily fit into one of those categories, so we categorized them. Things that we heard often under the category of safety had to do with vehicle speeds, and Highway 50 as a barrier, and street lighting and personal security, but vehicle speeds came up time and time again. Under another category of general infrastructure was physically separated bikeways. They really wanted to have more physical separation between themselves outside of a vehicle and those that are inside of an automobile. And then, lastly, the specific locations that we asked about, or we didn't ask about but the locations that came up quite often, like I said, US 50 came up, but Coloma Road was repeatedly, came up as a common response. All of this, and more data that I'm not going through tonight, fed into a conversation that we had with our plan development team, where we have stakeholders from a number of different organizations. We have a few city staff members, we have representatives from CRPD, from the police department, from school districts, and SACRT, and we put our heads together to develop a draft vision statement and goals. And the draft vision statement and goals is what I'm hoping to get your feedback on tonight. And it will be our North Star moving forward as we go throughout the next roughly 12 months of this project, where we'll come back and, and come back to this vision statement and set of goals as we come up against challenging questions. And so we'll say, well, does this meet the intent of, of what we want? So I want to get your feedback on that, but I'm not able to advance the slides anymore.
Oh, sorry.
Can you just advance to the, maybe two more? And one more. There we go. Thanks. So the vision statement that we're proposing tonight is, residents and visitors of the city of Rancho Cordova lead healthy and active lifestyles through safe, connected, and equitable routes, as well as a culture that supports walking, biking, and rolling for everyone, whether for essential trips or for leisure and social activities. The four goals that follow, or that go with this, would be, safety first, traveling on city streets and paths should not result in a loss of life, healthy lifestyles, residents and visitors value their health and are free to incorporate active travel into their lives, joyful choices, walking, biking, and rolling are joyful, practical, satisfying, and natural choices for trips around the city, and finally, deliver and maintain, the city views active transportation projects and their maintenance as essential to everyday life. So council, the next slide that I have is just a next steps slide, and so I'll, we can just leave it back on, on the vision statement for a moment. And I would love to take the time, if there'd be any direction from city council of things that we maybe are missing from this vision statement, or things that you would like us to include or edit out moving forward. Otherwise, this will be our, our direction that we go over the next 12 months, using this as our, as our guide.
Sure, we can start with the, we will start with public comment. City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one from Helen Wayland-Bishaw.
Hello, it's me again. I have been to at least one of the meetings they had, and I'm going to beat the dead horse that I didn't really see it presented here. And that was, there was an old biking proposal that would connect through the easements that were granted in 1973 over the then Cassis estate, now the TruMark, that would connect on Meyer Del Rio on the other side, which is a county. Currently, most of the bikers coming up from the park come up, they make a right-hand turn on Sterling Park Drive, they take Tiffany West up to the Folsom Boulevard. The proposal should be that they go over Sterling Park Drive, enter on the public easements that are granted in 1973 over Cassis property, put the little bridge that was guaranteed to us, and that the Cassis were supposed to pay $65,000 to the park services to put the canal over the, a bridge over the canal to connect to Meyer Del Rio. Why is this important? Is, we should not have children going up to a dangerous intersection, which is the Rod Bodry and Folsom Boulevard, to make a right-hand turn to go to the library. The bicyclists are now going through the residential area, the streets are not that wide, and sometimes they're not seen. So by them going through a residential area, it could be more hazardous to their health by somebody not seeing a bicyclist and backing out. We need to pursue a path that was in the works on the bicycle master plan years ago, decades ago, that would take us over the Cassis property, the TruMark property now, connect it with Meyer Del Rio, because the families could walk along that, it's a quicker route to get to the library. It also brings a bicyclist out on a four-way controlled intersection, and not a T-intersection, where you have that dangerous turn coming from Folsom Boulevard, where you make the right-hand turn on Rod Bodry, and everybody's got to swing out wide. So that needs to be on the thing. I mean, I brought it up at other meetings, and it seems to like not be a high thing. It would be beneficial for all the bicyclists that use the Rod Bodry's protective bicycle lanes, or don't use them and ride in the street, to get them out of the residential area on West Tiffany, West, I guess, West Tiffany Lane, through that area. So I really think that needs to be part of this plan, and might have to communicate with Sacramento County, but a lot of the people are coming from the bicycle path and going into Sacramento County. We would give them the option to either go further down on Meyer Del Rio and come out at the Bradshaw, so they would have two four-way controlled intersections that they would have the option of, and not having the first option being a three-way intersection, which has people making wide swings onto Rod Bodry, coming from the Coloma area down Folsom Boulevard. So I really like that one part of it. That would really be a big safety help.
That's all the public comment we have for this item.
We'll start with councilmember Budge on council comments.
Thank you. I have, I have three comments. I know absolutely nothing about the details of the Cassis property being mandated to spend $65,000 to build the bridge. of the Cassis property being mandated to spend sixty five thousand to build the bridge over the canal. What I do know is that when the parcel map came through subdivision review committee on the parcel map on the east end of Mira Del Rio came through subdivision review committee. We did condition it for there to be an easement in there. It shows up quite clearly. I know that you and Albert are familiar with that because we've talked about it before. And the intent was to be able to bridge that canal and ultimately accomplish the county's longtime goal of having an off street bicycle path on the south side of the river, because everybody knew that not all of the American River Bike Trail was ever going to get to the south side of the river. And and so there is an easement there, just like Linda Rio crosses the Mayhew Canal between College Greens East and Riviera East. Actually, that's Butterfield. But that that was the intent of that, and that's why there's the easement there. We do know that the people whose houses adjacent to that easement have built a garden or something there and probably wouldn't give it up easily, but but the easement is there to go across the canal. My first comment is that the original transportation plan that Public Works brought to us as a new city was probably the best, one of the best plans I had ever read, because it was not fiscally constrained. What they did, almost every plan that you ever saw from Sacramento County, it would say, we only have this much money and this is what we can do with it. But they didn't do that. They simply said, this is what we want to do. This is where we want to go. This is what we would like to see in terms of transportation for Rancho Cordova. And then at the end, there were there were a couple of pages about potential sources of income, sources of revenue. The other thing that's important is the underpinning here. Remember that the chart that shows that the the majority of people's trips, desired trips, had to do with errands and this, that, and the other? So one of the things that we've talked about years ago is the fact that it would be really nice to be able to recreate things like Capital Village all over Rancho Cordova. Because the the main problem with all this business about the distances is the fact that there's no destination within a reasonable distance. So if we don't design our neighborhoods or encourage our home builders to design neighborhoods where there are things like old corner grocery stores or or whatnot, you know. Goodness, everybody, everybody in Garrett's neighborhood has to cross Sunrise, of all things, to get to the grocery store and and Walgreens. And it's not the safest thing to do and and, you know, God bless them for for doing that. But we really need to think more closely in with this general plan update about how we create opportunities for there to be the post office or another store or another restaurant or something like that, another coffee shop, another Starbucks, another Dutch Bros, whatever, that people can get to without having to get out on a main street because it's right there in their neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you for that comment.
Councilmember Little.
Nope.
Councilmember Sander.
I have a few comments, some of which may be controversial, so maybe we'll perk up the, you know, the state nature of the meeting. I think we need, you know, as much regional connectivity as possible, various jurisdictions invest in trails around the region. And we don't often think about the big connections or we have a lot of dead ends. You know, having been an inheritor of Sacramento County Development, dead ends is sort of a specialty that they had in planning here from nineteen sixty to to two thousand. You drive anywhere in Carmichael, you see a ton of them. Thank goodness, we were a little more master planned in Rancho Cordova. We have a limited number of dead ends, but still, those are a total failure of planning to have dead ends, and it's particularly true when you're talking about where you're biking or or walking. Because it's that much more investment. If it's in your car and you got to drive around a dead end to get to the other side, okay. But on a bike, that's like big effort, lots more time. So to that end, you know, we've got some real bottlenecks. We also have a lot of jobs in Rancho Cordova that people want to get to and could potentially get to using alternative means if they actually worked and if those connections were made. So here's the first controversial one. I think we need a pedestrian bike bridge over the river, over the American River at Hagan Park or somewhere in that neighborhood. It sort of splits the difference between Sunrise and the existing one at Riverbend Park. It gives the entire region access to significant assets that are on opposing sides of the river. There's a golf course on the north, there's FAO Nature Center. On the south, there's Soweborn Farms, Sacramento Valley Live, Steamers, Hagan Park. That whole area could serve each other well if it was connected, but as of now, the option on the north side of the river is terrible, trying to get to the the nearest bridge. On the south side, it's much more convenient, but we don't have access to the north. So it's a that's a real challenge, and I know that is a a big picture with, you know, lots of dollar signs that would be attached to that. Maybe it's grantable, I don't know. It's a little unpredictable on transportation grants these days. We need the county to be willing to participate, and I'm not sure they would be at this point. But I think that ought to be on our plan nonetheless. We also, thinking about the river, we also need to be sure and link the river to as many neighborhoods as possible with like solid access, because if you do a poll of why people move to Rancho Cordova, access to that American River Parkway is always near the top, particularly for the northern part of the city. So we got to find ways to like extend that connection into neighborhoods to make it easy for, you know, kids and parents on bikes to get access to the American River Parkway. So the photos you saw in there along Rod Bodre, some people in my neighborhood, it's my neighborhood, really dislike those barriers. But the fact that I continue to see kids on bikes with parents like that riding them is a huge, you know, mark of safety in my book. Because I know my son or, you know, my mentees or whatever, learning how to ride bikes. I would not put them on a street where there were cars. But that sort of facility makes it possible, because you feel you feel safe enough. So we got to find ways to link, and I think the way to do that is sort of follow the Rod Bodre model. Create some sort of a barrier. I mean, you could do it in a different way, but it just has to be like a safe class one or class four. Sort of a trail, find the wide streets or find other quarters that exist in Rancho Cordova, drainage perhaps. But I know some residents really hate that idea, but drainage perhaps allows you to project into the neighborhood as much as possible and at least get to Coloma Road. A bunch of our roads were listed here as needing upgrades. I agree with all of those. I would just add the river as an attractor sort of to that list of of things we need to get to. And of course, you know, big picture, when we get down to drawing the the final plan, this has to be a no dead ends, no cul-de-sac kind of bike system. There are other opportunities that exist, you know, there's that two different housing projects that have been approved along Kilgore, very near the Delta Dental complex, south of American River Soccer. Right? If you look on a map, there's a natural corridor that would connect that with Capital Village. But it has to go through a little bit of an office park, but it's sort of the backside of an off, a couple of office buildings.
Everybody drives through there.
But there's a natural connection right there that would lead you, basically, if you if you could get it all the way through, you'd be to the canal. The Capital Village.
South of Station sixty six.
Yep, and then if you think of Capital Village north, across our new really fancy art gallery that's masquerading as a bridge. Then you've just then you've just got the gap between Folsom Boulevard and the river to try to span. And that's just a marvelous connection, you know, if you can if you can find those. And then here's the last somewhat controversial comment I'll make, you know, we built a great bikeway that exists from the Mather Field Station down to Old Placerville Road. Followed an old railroad corridor, went through people's backyards. Beautiful. I mean, it's got shade, it's got benches, it's got historical interpretation. And for a month or so, it was it was kind of marvelous to just go down there, drive through, and watch the people using it. I mean, it was little kids on bikes, like I mentioned before, but it was also people running with their dog. Kids walking, little kids, like toddlers, walking. Senior citizens in wheelchairs, I mean, just every user you can imagine was on that trail. And then there was the homeless impact. And pretty much that has squelched that trail. So to the extent that we can't control that, that we can't somehow make it feel safe enough for residents to use it. Because clearly there was massive demand and opportunity, people were taking advantage of it. But, you know, when the homeless impact was felt on it and the homeless were making themselves comfortable in those facilities, that pretty much squelched use of it. So that that's a consideration we're always going to have to have, you know, looking forward. Or you risk, you know, making great investment, great, great opportunity, and then because of a public safety, perceived public safety issue, being unable to do anything about it. Or or being able to, you know, get people to use it. But we have huge opportunities, we have huge assets on the ground, so this is really, this is really exciting work. And these are the kind of things that make the older part of Rancho Cordova a really attractive place to live when you've got easy access through a modern, you know, transportation system to an asset like the American River Parkway. So we're doing a lot of stuff right, a couple of big challenges, but I'm I'm really excited about the work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Weiss, Mary, Gatewood.
So when you're saying the active transportation plan, is that only bikers in your mind? Bikers, walkers, rolling, is that and that doesn't have anything to do with cars at all in your mind?
Well, the entire plan has to consider mobility for the city, so there'd be some streets that are dedicated as a throughput for for vehicles, yes, but this plan will be focused on how to provide better connections for people walking, biking, and rolling.
Okay, so it's only those. Okay, because I was gonna say like, the most important thing really is that a lot of I think a larger chunk of our community really doesn't take advantage of that. And potholes, safe place to park, shade structures that when the people actually park. You know, I never want to forget that piece of this whole thing is that those are great, but large chunks of our swaths don't actually use that. We want to get them out of their car, but we want to make sure that we have the best roads in the region. And I think we're on our way there, and I want to make sure that Albert always has enough money to make sure we have the best roads in the region. Right? Best roads. That being said, equitable is a weird word for routes, so let's work on, let's chat GPT that up. I'd see if we can get a better couple of whacks at it. I've been doing it myself. I didn't want to read them because I think that would be rude. But maybe something better than equitable and rolling, maybe we could use a different word instead of rolling in there.
Apparently, you know, scooter is called rolling.
That is not true. I am too old to be using those fancy finagling words.
That is the whole point. You don't ride.
Yes, I do, actually. Thank you very much. How dare you? I had my Superman scooter out this weekend. I got roller skates, yeah, but safety, I think, is the most important thing. I think we need to do more on that line, and I think along is well lit routes. So our parks are in massive need of lighting. I think a lot of times with the homeless problem, a lot of it, if we had lighting and proper structures, we could take care of a lot of people feeling a lot safer. Because I'm one of those people that does like to walk at night, and if we have more lights, it it helps out the community as a whole. That's morning and evening, and if we have to, we can also do the whole playing music. I know it's unheard of, but if you put music in the lights, it does tend to not be a spot that you can sleep. So if you put Mozart in, it's weird if you put Mozart in the lights in community parks and area, all of a sudden that becomes a safer area because no one wants to be there.
It works for Seven Eleven, it ought to work for a park.
A question, though, does the city have jurisdiction on the parks that you keep advising on?
They will. I meant, we, yes, in the the trails to the parks, we do, right? Trails to the parks, but in and I'm sure that two of the three park board members would love more lights to make the area, and I'm sure we could talk to them about it, because anything to make our citizens feel safer when they're taking advantage of these walking paths. And then we, I don't know how to invest in this, but small bridges to connect things. I mean, the, I know it's impossible, but I totally would love if we had a bridge that crossed over and actually connected this to the other side. So I didn't have to send my five year old, when he was five, across the street like he's playing Frogger with his friends, like that was the, okay, okay. But, I mean, as we get along a little farther down and become the AI capital of the world, I would love to invest ways to I I feel like our our walking biking paths are just one step away from being connected. They're always like right on the edge because that final mile is the hardest place to to find us, so if you add some word final mile, meaning that that one piece that makes it so you can go from your house to the bike path and still feel safe, the final mile. That's it. Thank you.
So I am obviously in alignment with my colleagues on to develop the continuous well-connected network of sidewalk sidewalks, bike lanes. You know, another thing is that we've touched upon is the connection between the transportation routes and public transit system, so making it easier for residents to switch between walking, biking, and the transit. In a President's Day weekend, my middle schoolers, my middle school, my middle schooler, he had a mandatory assignment of taking a walk with a guardian. So I walked with him from Heron Landing Park all the way to Rayleigh's, so when walking in, we walked through the residential neighborhood. So, you know, it was really pleasant and nice. On walking back, we walked on Sunrise. And so remember, we've driven there every day, but when you walk and notice that from Rayleigh's to all the way, I think, to Chrisandee, there is no walking path. And so we were walking on the side of the road, and so it was really dangerous with the cars whizzing by. We got to see, you know, so much broken glass. After a certain point, we were like, how many accidents even happened over here? So we, that was a part of it, and then so, you know, we need to make sure that we have walking paths for some of these. So we have a huge residential neighborhood, but there's not much they can walk to. Even the grocery stores, so there's no place to walk back. One thing I would like to add on your vision statement is on sustainability and environment. To say, you know, how we can promote this active transportation as a way to reduce the carbon emissions from and improve the air quality. So that could be part of, you know, how do we integrate the green infrastructure, you know, like Councilwoman Weiss, Mary Gatewood mentioned, you know, more tree-lined streets, shaded pathways, what we, what can we do? So that should be also one of our goals in for this, you know, sustainability and environment.
That's a great comment. We can work that in absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, do you have direction now, Drew? More than enough.
I feel like I have some great direction. Thank you for your comments. Just, I guess, in closing, the next steps would just be to incorporate these comments. We'll be publishing our existing conditions report and putting that up on our website. That includes an analysis called the Level of Traffic Stress, where we try and identify not just the connections to destinations that Councilmember Sander was talking about earlier, but try and quantify the level of comfort individuals feel in in traveling that path. So look forward to that. That is a good analysis, and then we'll begin phase two, where we're going back out to the public and having continuous conversations with them in April and in May. And all with the main goal of getting back to present to you all about a year from now, a final plan for adoption. But thank you for your feedback tonight.
David, do we have a, because I've walked the river, do we have a place where you can take your your paddle boards into the river along anywhere in Hagan or by our farm? Because in Folsom, you can like ride your bike directly into the water, and I always found that fun.
There are, there's at least one ramp along the river that I can think of, there's two that I can think of. There are other places you can get to, but it's not like you could ride your bike there.
We should look at that. I just feel like we'd never show off the coolest, one of the coolest features that you can get to it.
You'd have to go in at Riverbend Park or at Griss Mill Dam. Because everything else is is rocky and a cliff. And South Sunrise.
Yeah, there's boat ramps just just west of the Sunrise Bridge.
Yeah.
And there's another one.
Also east of the Sunrise Bridge.
On Rossmore, I think.
All of the launching for Epi's, for example, happens right, right? Or the Great American Triathlon happens right at the Sunrise.
Okay, when we went up the river with Metro Fire and we had to portage at the San Juan Rapids. We did walk up the beach there. Remember, that was when Kim was shaking hands with absolutely everybody on the beach on the way up the river.
While he was racing?
Hilarious. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. We're gonna move on to Agenda Item twelve point two, and I'm gonna ask the city clerk to announce the subject.
A city mascot discussion.
The Rancho Rocket, people. We are back. The Rancho Rocket. I'm excited. I haven't figured out his name, but the Rancho Rocket shooting to neighborhoods near you, a rocket that's about this big. It shows up. It can be fun. We can do off our rocket launch pads. I am excited about this new mascot. And the new shirts I'm gonna have, huh?
STEM.
STEM, okay, STEM and engineering. Siri, get behind this. Rancho Rocket.
I've asked for the.
It's phonetic. Who is more excited about the Rancho Rocket than, this is gonna be amazing. Maria?
I'm gonna call on Maria for the staff report.
Maria, how are we doing the Rancho Rocket? When are we launching this?
There's a staff report?
We don't need a staff report. Rancho Rocket.
There's a lot of excitement in this room.
I can use the AI tool from from our AI training to design. I'm gonna bring examples of rockets. I'd like to put them up on the board next time. Remember, remind me to do this.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers Maria Chacon, Communications and Public Affairs Director. I I don't think I need to mention this, but I will. Last summer, a couple of you went to Seoul, Korea and came back and asked staff to bring back a city mascot discussions as at a future council meeting. So that's what this is this evening. We are going to be discussing all things mascots. Tonight's discussion will cover very broadly what a mascot is, why an organization might want to create one, and also some key considerations.
You know, the rocket could have an astronaut that comes out of it, and we could name that astronaut, just putting it out there. Think I'll cool that.
We can name the mascot. So Maria, keep going.
Thank you, Mayor. So let's first talk a little bit about what is a mascot. Um, a mascot is a character used to represent an organization or product to build brand awareness and create an emotional connection with a target audience. Why would an organization want to use a mascot? There's a strategy behind this. And you can see on the screen here, it is used to build and increase an organization's awareness. Again, create an emotional connection with a brand, or in this case, a city. Sometimes you use it to humanize a brand, make a brand more relatable, drive engagement, or help to tell a brand story in unique ways. So the world of mascots, um, there are on the screen here a couple of very iconic mascots. People and organizations use mascots for a number of different reasons. For the most part, mascots are used in product marketing, for teams and universities, special initiatives. A big one is travel and tourism, and then, of course, promotional mascots. Here you see the M and M's. Each color represents a character and each has its own personality. For those Giants fans in here, Lucille needs no introduction. I I don't.
That's right. Champion Lucille. What is the pink weird thing?
I'll I'll talk about that in a second.
Lucille?
Lucille.
Lu-seal.
Okay, I love Lucille. That's our champion. You know what? That's what I get for a fan of Texas.
That's worse than playing in baby blue.
Uh, Smokey the Bear is um, an American campaign and advertising icon of the US Forest Service, so a governmental uh, character, and it was used in a public education campaign for wildfire prevention. Uh, and then the the mascot on the right is Hetchi. Hetchi is a character that is inspired. It's an imaginary character that's been part of Seoul's Seoul Korea's six hundred year culture and history. Hetchi is known as the protector of justice and safety, and also the bringer of dreams, hope, and happiness. Seoul just recently reimagined Hetchi in this figure that we see on the screen here. And it was used as a travel and tourism mascot to, for the tagline, Seoul, a globally attractive city. So you can see mascots are used in a number of different ways for a number of different reasons.
I just Googled that, Maria, and it says Hetchi. It blocks all types of bad energy and brings fortune and happiness.
That's excellent. I'm, so it's almost like a crystal. So let's dig a little bit deeper. How are cities and locations using mascots? You know, we know that brands use mascots, but how are cities and other locations using mascots? So so further few examples here for you. Sometimes mascots are used for special initiatives. And so on the very left, you'll see that UNICEF Cameroon asked children in Cameroon to draw a mascot. And Tara, the lioness, won, and Tara teaches children about climate change. So she was used for, again, a public education campaign. And there, I'm not gonna show the video tonight, but there's um, a really cute video of kids dancing all around with Tara, the lioness. So Tara is, again, really connecting emotionally with the children. Teams also, as you know, use mascots uh, very broadly, but also very specifically. And interestingly, Kansas City, which is a city, uh, uses their Casey Wolf. And actually, this is the only mascot that is in the National Mascot Hall of Fame that's part of a team. Travel and tourism, uh, lots and lots of mascots used for travel and tourism. This example right here is Ruby the Kangaroo from Tourism Australia. Unfortunately, this cute mascot is also has been the victim of some social media bullying. And so that is the downside of having a mascot. There's a lot of positives to having a mascot, but Ruby has been recreated as a meme and in some negative ways. And so you always run that risk when you do have a mascot that someone will co-opt the mascot for negative purposes. Of course, the figure on the very right, um, that's uh, standing alongside the mayor and Councilmember Sanders and Micah is um, a promotional mascot. So this is, I am gonna probably butcher this name, Joy Young. Uh, and this is the mascot of Yeongin, uh, South Korea, which was unveiled in August while you all were there. And it is um, a mascot that was created by Seoul, the Seoul Metropolitan Government.
You know, the Rancho Rocket has Solidines, AI, and semiconductors in it, just putting it out there from Rancho Cordova. Go ahead.
This is an example where a local government developed a mascot to promote a region and also to revitalize a local economy. So again, lots and lots of different examples of how cities and locations are using mascots. So what does it take, generally speaking, to meaningfully create a sub-brand, which is what a mascot is? And I say I use meaningfully as a very intentional word because you don't want to just create a mascot and not have a program around it or a purpose around it. So this is just an example of what it might take to create a mascot. It's about an eighteen to twenty month process, would take between six hundred and eight hundred hours of staff time, we estimate. That's only about thirty hours or so um, on average a month, which really probably is an underestimate. I checked with some brand experts in the region, and the cost is between one and one and a half million. And so when we, when we decide that we want to create a city mascot, it involves not just envisioning a cute little character that brings to life something that is meaningful to us. But it also means conducting research, design, and development. You have to refine the design, you test it, you invite the community to be a part of it. And then you you obviously create a campaign around it and launch the the mascot. So some considerations this evening, uh, the first is, um, you met, all met in January and came up with the city's strategic focus areas. So one of the considerations would be to determine, does the creation of a city mascot ladder up to one of these strategic focus areas? And if so, which one might that be? Some other considerations would be to uh, talk, you know, amongst ourselves about what is, you know, our why for this? What is the strategy behind it? Does it fit in with our current priorities? Is the time to launch acceptable? Eighteen to twenty months is, um, you know, around two years, if you wanted to round up. What is our return on investment? And given the cost of what this would be to do it meaningfully, is the return on it worth the investment? Finally, um, some options and next steps for your consideration. Staff could come, conduct some in-depth research and bring this back at a later date. This is what Micah and I call Research Lite. And so this is very just broad brushstrokes of what it might take, but we would go in and dig a little bit deeper and come back and provide you with more meaningful information. You might decide that this now is not the right time to pursue it, or there might be other options that you're thinking about. And with that, um, we'd love to hear if you have questions or further comments.
All right.
I'm gonna start with any public comment.
There is no public comment for this item.
Please, Rancho.
With that, we will move on to Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Where are you at? Really? Where are you at? Nothing? All right. So, um, first off, a million dollars to do a logo is crazy. Just crazy to do, seeing that I ran a marketing company and did design for cities and states and never charged a million dollars to design something like that, but.
I already drew it.
Bam, already done. Listen, we just saved five hundred thousand dollars with the Rancho Rocket. I think it's just a cool um, idea. I I just love the idea of having a mascot. Because there's a lot of things, you want to rally the community behind, and that's one of those cool things that we don't have. That would be fun. You can, I mean, we're trying to do the AI technology. It's based something in Rancho. And it would allow us to do marketing for the companies that kind of come around that kind of engineering, you know, sciences. We want to be a STEM school as we separate our school district into something cool. We could be an engineering science kind of thing. And these are these kind of, these are these kind of things that show that we're trying to push towards it. I mean, plus, we are the place where some of the first rockets were launched in the world. And you know, I mean, like, we want that kind of thing. We want that knowledge. Plus, we have um, older stuff that we want to put, make historical. And it just makes sense to have the Rancho Rocket show up there. And then, and I'm just, I'm just tickled pink about how cool this would be. I mean, we can bite it in small chunks instead of just be that. We can get the kids involved, the school involved, they could all have their examples. We could have rocket contests, which as a nerd, sounds fascinating. Could you imagine, like, we all shoot, go to schools and whoever can shoot the rocket the farthest? David, back me up here. Rockets in the air that shoot in the air. Instead of for high schools or the junior highs, as they compete against each other, who's gonna be the Rancho Rocket? And they get to wear an award or something like that. Plus, once again, it is phonetic, which fascinates. It's perfect. The shirts, I am, it's just one of those cool things that we could do. I don't think we're, I'm willing to spend a million bucks, but I I definitely can find a a Rancho-style rocket at a discount rate, a couple hundred thousand, maybe, with with the logos and some some cool uh, design. Thank you.
Yeah, it matches our history. I mean, if you did go to Rancho Rocket.
You know, we already have a documentary, right, from the golden age to the space age, right? So that that fits into the theme. We already have the background and the reasoning on why we want to go, if we do go the rocket route. But I'm going to Councilmember Sanders, did you have any comments?
Uh, I think what Garrett said was pretty much, pretty much on target. What we, what we saw in Korea was really interesting. I mean, most of their mascots, and there were a lot of them around, but they were all anime style, right? So sort of that, we saw the image in the presentation, sort of like, you know, rounded cartoonish sort of a character. And the US mascots are typically the ones we probably identify with are sports things, right? Professional sports teams or college sports teams. So there there's sort of that, the two different worlds of them there. I suppose you could have, Maria, you might have an answer to this. There might be multiple versions of a mascot, you know, like, obviously, the 3D version of someone wearing it potentially, or um, I don't know, a statue or some other representation versus something that might appear in like a cartoon version of that.
Yes, that's correct. There would be a different iterations of the same mascot. So there might be a dressed up mascot, or there might be a stuffed animal mascot, or there might be a drawing of the mascot, or you know, different, basically different iterations of.
Yeah, because I'm thinking of like St. Louis baseball Cardinals, they have Fred Bird as their like mascot character. But there's also like a cartoon version of Fred Bird. Yeah. So I I think there's opportunity here. Probably engages people at a different level with the city, makes them think about us differently. And I guess the one thing Garrett didn't mention that I think is cool about this idea is that this is fun.
Yeah.
And like, fundamental to what we do in Rancho Cordova is, you know, we don't settle for good. It's gotta be great. So, you know, good enough isn't. But another principle we've got is fun. You know, we really want things to be fun and engaging, memorable, you know, experiential in Rancho Cordova. So this definitely checks that fun box.
And you spent the last twenty years building an arts community. You mean, we can't set them on fire and be like Rancho Rocket and let them loose? Have you seen our smud boxes?
Do like a theme around.
They're great looking.
So, yeah, I'm I'm in favor of pursuing it. I also had a little budget shutter.
Yeah, no, we don't, we don't have to go quite that far.
Yeah, it's it's a very interesting thing, I think, to pursue. Maria, do you have, like, from a professional point of view, an idea of sort of the impact of this effort, like, um, a way to measure it or or say, oh, no, no, we'd be far better to do that than this in terms of impact for the investment?
So I think a couple of things. Um, as far as the budget goes, we would have to hire an outside agency to assist us. So that's why the costs are so great. We can't do this in-house, even though we have brand capabilities. None of us have ever launched a mascot, except for Councilmember Gateway, apparently. He's on the team.
The Rancho Rocket.
He's on the team. Um, as far as, um, I'm sorry, Councilmember Sanders, what was your, what was your second question?
Like, could you compare it with another investment we would make? Like, can you, can you measure sort of the impact of this versus something else?
Yeah. So for example, if we were going to do a brand exercise, if we were going to um, reimagine the brand logo, that would be a, you know, a brand exercise that's very similar to uh, developing a sub-brand, which is a mascot. And so, you know, typically, you would go out and you bring your audience along with you, so they're part of this whole thing. So you conduct research and, you know, that might involve some random samples, some focus groups, things like that. So then, you know, if you're gonna do it the right way, which that is always how we do it, we never want to not be strategic. You know, you, once you identify what those those things are, um, you know, the brand characteristics that you want to bring to life, and then then you start going into the design aspects of it. And then, uh, once you, you know, get that far, then you're developing the marketing campaign. Once you develop the marketing campaign or the brand storytelling, or, you know, there's lots of different ways to to describe that, then you would set up the measures and um, figure out, you know, what is it we want to accomplish? Now, I think at the beginning of the exercise, we need to have some goals too, some goals and objectives for for this. So but at the the tail end of it, we could figure out what those those measures are. And there's certainly ways to measure how impactful a sub-brand is.
Who would it be to have an event and have the Rancho Rocket show up there?
Councilmember Budge, do you have any comments?
Return on investment is an important question. And I'm really struggling to figure out how you get excited about a brand that basically looks like a fat pencil.
Eyes in the air. It gets you to the moon. Listen, it makes cool noises. It launches it. Listen, just, there's lots of different rockets. Don't be, listen, you can, it can transform.
Relations manager for Aerojet GenCorp.
Yeah. Hey, wait a minute.
Community relations.
No, no person I've, no little kid I've ever met doesn't want a cool rocket.
I'm a little scared that Linda said that, honestly, now, knowing her background.
So, um, there have been better things. I mean, it just, if you, if you consider the, um, if you are one of the people who can set aside and and not be concerned about water contamination, okay, then there are, there are great things. My goodness, um, the T-shirts we had because Aerojet built the OMS engines on the space shuttle. Or um, the, um, under the Reagan administration, the national aerospace plane, New York to Tokyo in two and a half hours. And actually, somebody right now is re- reimagining the um, the Concorde. You know, updating the Concorde and that beautiful sleek design. But rockets don't do it.
Like the American River salmon, Rancho Cordova salmon, salmon.
Please, no more.
The Rancho, listen, the Rancho palm tree.
So, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna table...
No more dead fish festivals.
We're gonna table the discussion of what the mascot is, but I think in lieu of today's context of, do we need a mascot? I think the answer is absolutely yes. We do have a sticker shock on the price. You know, as councilmembers, when we travel to other cities, we always bring back ideas on what we like and what we want to bring to our city. And mascot was one that really jumped out when we went to South Korea, right? It was, they had a gift shop in their lobby, and, you know, when we talked about ROI, you know, we would absolutely have it. You know, we have keychains, we have those tags that all kids wanna put on their backpacks, and, you know, we'd have hoodies. There's so many ways that we can sell merchandise. We don't even have to build it ahead of time. We would get our return just by, you know, having this mascot. You know, this mascot would ward off evil eye, you know, bring in good energy. But most of all, it would have like a sense of belonging. I mean, today's Satan Patrick's Day, and we all wore green, you know? It's just a representation. So once you have that kind of a mascot and a sense of belonging, and everybody in Rancho Cordova will wear it, and you go out, out of Rancho Cordova, and you see somebody wearing that mascot, you have a sense of belonging and a sense of pride for the city. So it's absolutely something that's a fun way to incorporate pride into our city.
I'm struggling with the, with the mental image of taking a warm, fuzzy, stuffed rocket to bed.
Again, I, I'm, the rocket is not set in stone, but...
Listen, the fuzzy rocket. Guess it's gonna be great. This is more exciting by the minute.
Where's the green rocket that...
Yeah, show the, show the rocket design.
Look.
Bam! It's already done. Maria, could you zoom in on that?
It's been here a decade. Someone 3D printed it and gave it to me.
You're welcome.
When I was mayor when he was, it's been following me around the dais for about a decade. But yeah, there we go.
The Rancho Rocket's there.
But you know, I guess alternative ideas would be like the Rancho Remodelers, 'cause we have so much homebuilding industry and remodeling industry, right? Or the Rancho Auto Recycler.
Stop it. Stop it right now.
You give us that 1.5 million, we'll figure it out.
Canova Fairy Shrimp.
Canova Fairy Shrimp!
Okay. Sorry, Council...
I'm sorry, I'm just making rocket sound good, right, Garrett?
It's so good. I cannot wait to vote for this rocket.
I am...
We wanna hear from Joe.
Yes, I'm gonna go. Councilmember Little, do you have comments?
I was gonna say it should be the Cordova reckless driver, but... I, I agree with everything they said.
That's a universal problem.
Yes, yes. No, we actually, it's a problem everybody has.
It's not something we wanna promote.
And we also have to be clear when we're joking, which I was. I think they all had great comments. It's just the sticker shock. It's, I get the cost of doing business, doing a campaign like this. It's what, what it costs in the business world. It's just hard to justify to constituents, even if it's the market price, sometimes it's hard to justify. So that's the one thing I would say. I think it's a, seems well thought out. You guys got a plan, and I'm looking forward to what we get.
Okay. Maria, do you have direction?
I think, I think what the, what we were asking for is, you know, kinda to bring back actually a more detailed plan. I think this was, as Maria said, kinda Research Light on, on the conversation, and so I think we're hearing still a lot of excitement around...
I'm literally gonna do a full markup board and everything for the, I'm gonna pull it out. I'm just gonna, give me at least a two-week notice that we're gonna do this again. I will have a full board with pictures and kids with the rocket, holding the rocket, walking the rocket watch.
You know, we came up with the RCYC logo with the kids' feedback. I mean, we could do that, right? It doesn't have to go third branding with, you know, professional. We could have our kids do it, and that's also part of community pride.
Yeah, I think we can bring back some options. I think there are different ways to do this, but we also have to be conscious of the way to do it that is the most effective and the most, you know, kind of long-term productive for us. So I think what we would request today is we're still seeing a lot of interest in moving forward the conversation, and we'd be happy to bring back a more detailed kind of conversation around the process and the cost and the way that we get there in the near future. So I think we're hearing a lot of excitement, and we're ready to dig in and go a little deeper on the, on the process.
Sounds good.
Mayor Polapati, would you like to take one additional public comment for this item?
Let's do it.
James Garcia.
See, you pulled him in.
That's right. He's an IT guy.
Yeah, you guys guys pulled me in. James from Stone Creek. I kinda looked at it and kinda thought, the Olympics, thinking of that. The Olympics have a mascot too. Every host country has one every four years or every two, depending on how we had it. Kinda like the idea of that, but they also run contests. You were talking about the youth center, they did it. We could have our local schools have a contest to help come up with a mascot design, of course, with city oversight, to make sure that's appropriate, but we could do something like that, a little more cost-effective. The million dollars, I don't wanna pay that. I'm just being honest, and there's an awful lot of residents that would probably, you're gonna pay what for this item? As Linda even mentioned, that's a big sticker shock. But we could use it in a lot of your marketing campaigns, you have it, you go to great events, it's new swag. People love swag. So you can use it, but you have to be efficient and responsible with our funds, 'cause a million dollars, one and a half million is an awful lot, and a lot, a lot of time on your staff to be able to spend 30 hours a month or more. You said that was a low ball. Figured that's a long time to come up with that. So it's a great idea, love the excitement. However, sticker price, it's not in our city's best interest to spend that much money for one item that's a swag item, 'cause we're gonna be spending it in our taxpayer money through you buying it and then giving it away. I don't see us being able to have a gift shop and people wanting to buy it. I don't see that, not yet. Maybe in the future, but not now. So think about it, possibly do a contest. That would be kinda fun. But not 100% so on the rocket idea yet, but...
Work with it. Work with it. You like the Aerojet? Come on now.
Aerojet's fun.
What is a cool plane? Give me a good plane that we could...
But I'm gonna tell you this, because of their SpaceX, and people are liking rockets again, but it, it's a timely thing, so you have to kinda, let's have some fun with it.
Yeah.
But in moderation, baby steps, please, not million-dollar sticker shock. Thanks.
Thank you. I think we can move on to Agenda Item 12.3. Allow the City Clerk to announce the subject.
Appointment of real property negotiators. Micah Renner, City Manager, and Adam U. Lindgren, City Attorney. Property address, 10455 Investment Circle, Assessor's Parcel Number, APN 0570212008000.
Move approval.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment for this item.
Move approval.
She said move approval.
Yeah, don't you have to second?
Second. Joe seconded, he's faster.
Councilmember Little?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander? Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
Mayor Polapati?
Yes. So we're gonna go to council requests for future agenda items. Colleagues, do we have any future agenda items?
Don't, I would like to bring one up. There's potential of some cool library locations, and so I would like to have a really good talk about the library and what it would cost to set up those two smaller libraries with, with your help, Joe.
Yeah, just tell me what to tell them, what to ask for. Obviously, staff's in charge of a lot of that, but that wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah, I actually think the library conversation will come up in our budget conversation coming up, and so I think probably that's the right forum to have that kind of conversation before bringing back kind of all the list of places, but what would be the kind of appropriate time to talk about that library for future?
Okay.
So before we move on to future, I'm sorry, before we adjourn the meeting, I'd like